Executive Session of the Wayne Board of Education Public Work Session, Meeting of November 12th, 2020, was convened in the Media Center of Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Wayne, New Jersey. The Statement of Compliance Setting Fourth Time, Date and Location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Please rise for a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Do we do a roll call, Mr. Moffett? At the previous meeting?
A call roll. Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba? Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mrs. Shear?
Here.
Okay. Dr. Toback?
Okay. So, good evening. We're holding our Board of Education meeting at Anthony Wayne Middle School again. Due to the limited number of people that may assemble indoors, this in-person meeting is limited to the Board of Education members, some administrators, and our Board of Education attorney. However, the meeting is open for public view and participation in the same manner as our other meetings held using Zoom. So, this evening, we'll be discussing our return to school plan. This plan has evolved over the past few weeks since it was originally presented and includes three important actions. One, consideration of high-risk time periods. So, it's clear that the holidays are a time when people will gather. In this being the case, the school district plans to go virtual for one week following and for two weeks following, I'm sorry, following Thanksgiving and for two weeks following New Year's. Holidays involve an influx of college students and relatives, and sometimes this leads to an increase in COVID cases. Like most colleges and universities, we're establishing this buffer period to reduce the possibility of outbreaks at schools. Even though in-person instruction is lost, we may gain in-person instructional time in the long run. Two, virtual Wednesdays. The second phase calls for the elimination of virtual Wednesdays at all grade levels and a change in cohorts. Three, the merging of the high school cohorts. Or in other words, move from three cohorts to two cohorts. Class sizes are small across the board at both of our high schools, and combining cohorts would not lead to an inability to maintain social distance. So, based on the work completed over the past few weeks, it is clear we are able to move ahead with all these actions. The question is whether or not we should move ahead, because right now, we have a major increase in positive COVID tests. And in some ways, I feel that we're fighting to just keep hold of what we have in terms of in-person instruction. So, the reason I mention that is because the numbers that we have as of today, okay? So, based on a recent survey of our nurses, our nursing supervisor, we have a number of additional students and staff members that have tested positive. So, we have eight positive tests for staff members. We have 29 staff members who are quarantining. We have 26 students that are positive, and we have 101 students who are currently quarantining. Keep in mind, this increase took place during a week where the district was working remotely. And keep in mind the amount of contact tracing that would be necessary and taking place while school is in session, because that contact tracing has to happen immediately. The fact that we were remote means that the number of staff and students who do not need to quarantine is greatly reduced. If we were not remote this week, our quarantine numbers would be much larger. Well, the latest guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health clearly shows that COVID cases are on the increase. We are still classified as a minimal risk region. Another part of the process, since we originally unveiled Phase Two, that proposal, we solicited feedback from the community. And so, quite a few members of the community participated in an email. And so, ultimately, Mrs. Reichman, if you could talk a little bit about the feedback we received from the community?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everybody. This was an opportunity to look at upwards of 260 respondents, which was inclusive of staff members and parents and guardians. And what I did was I summarized general themes that emerged. It was pretty consistent. In terms of virtual Wednesday, the majority of staff members indicated that they would like to maintain virtual Wednesday. And the surrounding feedback included comments that were super important to consider. One thing that was reflected in many of the elementary teacher comments is, actually, I guess it was consistent at all levels, I'm sorry. Students have an opportunity to see their teachers' faces. But what I did see amongst elementary teachers is the importance of being able to see your teacher's face and make that direct contact smiling. On the other days, they have the combination of in-class students and at-home students and their masks at all times. Another thing that was shared that was important to the teachers is it gives all of our staff a mask break for the day. Many shared that wearing a mask for the entire school day is something that's hard to do. They've adjusted, but it is nice to know that they have a day where they have a break from this. It was reflected that wellness activities are infused and they see value in these. And it was also highlighted that as the weather gets colder, more and more time is spent in the school buildings initially in the fall, and we've had some nice weather. Many of the activities were held outside, windows have been open. And so, having the Wednesday off is just less time that's in the school. Parents also commented that many now prefer, based on what has been happening in the community with the upward ticking COVID cases, is that they would like to maintain the virtual Wednesday. Many comments reflected the surge in COVID cases and uptick in Passaic County specifically. Very few parents indicated that they would like to see a return on Wednesday or a full return in school. I think it was under five as of yesterday afternoon. There were several comments about the high-risk periods, and it seemed pretty consistent and unanimous that parents and staff all seem to be in favor of the virtual weeks following Thanksgiving and the winter holiday breaks. There were also several parents who, and community members, who suggested we consider going fully remote, the three days leading up to both Thanksgiving and the winter holiday breaks, due to the fact that many will be having out-of-town guests in their homes. So, that was a concern. Regarding the two-cohort model in the high school, the majority of parents who responded are in favor of switching to a two-cohort model, but maintaining the remote Wednesday. This way, one cohort of students is in the building each week. They would have the four-day rotation, be home on Wednesdays, and we wouldn't be mixing cohorts in the building on any given week. Special ed still seems to be a concern. Parents were looking forward to having their children in school five days as opposed to four days if we were to return on Wednesday. And, you know, we're still working through each of those issues, recognizing that every student has individual and specific needs and encouraging parents to work with their teachers, case managers. And, you know, we're working in the central office to look at ways to provide additional support and guidance. And that concludes the summary of the email.
So, at this point, what I'd like to do is open up a discussion for the Board of Ed to talk about these issues and to hear additional feedback from the Board.
Okay. I'd like to go first. Mrs. Albanese?
Thank you, first of all, to the administration for, I know, the tremendous amount of work that went into considerations on all the different aspects of the plan. I appreciate the feedback as far as from staff members, from parents, from students concerning, you know, their day-to-day life and how this affects them. I do like aspects of the plan. I think that it's very well thought out. I do think that we need to, based on the numbers and the changes in the community since we met two weeks ago, I think we do need to look at the start date for Phase Two. And that maybe November 30th is not the right date for us. And when we try to maintain what we have, we get through the holiday periods, and we look at the start of a Phase Two, perhaps sometime in January. I think it's a good plan. I just don't know if it's the right plan for us to try to move forward with that this time. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Giordano?
I also want to salute and thank the administration for their very, very hard work on this. We're a board that listens to the will of the people. And it sounds like through our thought exchanges and our contacts that we should heed the will of the people. And I concur with Ms. Albanese. I would even go so far as to say we would start maybe mid-January, giving the one-week or two-week runoff after New Year's, when many people are still going to travel. We've seen situations with a holiday like Halloween. Now, we're going to have Thanksgiving, and then we're going to have Christmas and New Year's. It may be prudent for us to look at that as a reopening time. Great plan. As with every plan, you have to be able to roll with the punches, and the state's getting punched right now. So, this is a good idea for us to kind of bob and weave a little bit and make sure that we are not just sticking to the plan for the sake of sticking to the plan and sticking to the dates for the sake of sticking to the dates. So, I'd say listen to the people in this case, and I also agree with Ms. Albanese. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Shear?
I just want to say that it's a good plan. I obviously thank the administration for all their work, but the, I still see no reason why, as of November 30th, we cannot combine the high school. It will keep the virtual Wednesdays. I agree with that. The teachers need the time and to see, you know, be home. But there's no reason why the high schools cannot go into their two cohorts. And basically, you put it out to the people, you ask them their opinion, and overwhelmingly, the high school parents want two cohorts. Their kids are not getting enough time in person, and they don't want to go and be in person when it's just them and a teacher sitting in a room. So, based on the numbers, because I did ask about this, based on the numbers, we would have no problem going to two cohorts as of November 30th and still being able to social distance with the numbers that are in our schools right now. So, I would like to push the Board to really consider the two cohorts for the high school. Thank you.
Mr. Pavlak?
We're looking at a moving target here, as we all know. Things change by the hour, by the day, by the week. We look at where we were two weeks ago, and we were already that this plan, it is an excellent plan, and the administration has done a wonderful job in putting it together. But we look at what's changed in two weeks, and I ask, what's going to change in the next two weeks? The way everything is trending now, it's not trending in the right direction. In two weeks from now, this whole conversation may be mute, because the governor and his infinite wisdom may decide, we're done. No more, everything's virtual. So, I think we have to put the brakes on this, and I think we, I appreciate what Mrs. Shear says, and I really appreciate what the parents say and all their input, and I agree with them. But we know what we have. We've done well with what we have. Why try to change it now and force the issue? That's my concern. By forcing the issue of combining those cohorts and going to two, it's, the outcome may not be good. And I don't know. I may be totally wrong. But again, I'm not just reacting. I'm looking at data from a lot of different sources that tell me things aren't going the right way, folks. And we know, again, we know what we have. We've done well with what we have. I do not support coming, changing this on November 30th at all. At best, my earliest would be in January, the two, take the two weeks after Christmas. And then, in that time, it gives us time, again, to look at the data, see where we are, then make a responsible decision based on the data, not just do it because we said we were going to do it. And so, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Anyone else? We're having a wonky internet connection.
Mrs. Putup?
Frozen. Okay. Mrs. Putup?
Hi. Thank you. Plan one has been, Phase One has been, I think, a terrific plan to get our schools open with, to have children return, meet their teachers. And I think we should stick with it for a while. In the words of many of my colleagues up here on the Board, the scientific data that we're faced with right now does not support a move to Phase Two. And until things start pointing in the correct direction, that the positivity rate goes down instead of up, we should just stay the course. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, I was on mute. Go ahead, Mrs. Shear.
I just want to, I just want to say that when we're talking about this, have we done well? Yes. But even the governor came out with a statement that I'm looking at right now, saying that he's not planning on shutting down schools. Could it happen? Yes, of course, the numbers are going, it can happen. But as of right now, the rumors about him shutting down schools are rumors. They are nothing more than rumors. And there have only been 140 cases, six cases linked to 36 school outbreaks. If you think of the numbers that we have around here, school is not where these kids are getting the outbreak. So, holding them back from their education, and as someone, as a parent, who is seeing the ramifications of all this for her own child, it's, it's very difficult. And while we still can put them in school and get the more in-person time they get with the teachers, the better off these kids will be. So, I just, I cannot push it anymore. My daughter has not been in school in a month. That's how the high school works with three cohorts. I want you to all understand that, that my daughter has not seen the inside of the school in over a month. That's insane. What is she getting from that? So, I just, I really, I get that you don't want to move to Phase Two. I'm not ready to just say, let's go back in. I get that the numbers are going up. I see all that. But the bottom line is, is that we haven't had that many cases because of our schools. Our sports have been running phenomenally without cases. We're one of the only districts that can say that. These high school kids have been together. They're on a soccer field together. They're on a football field together. They're on a field hockey, I can name every sport. It's happening right now. They're together. So, putting them in a room where there's six of them instead of one or two of them with a mask on, socially distanced, is not what's going to be risking our child's life right now, when they're all running around on fields together with no masks, sweating, training, and everything else together. So, I beg of you to please just take a minute and just consider this. I realize that I happen to be, I believe, the only person on the Board right now who even has a high school child. But just so you get an idea of my daughter's cohort C, she's not seen the inside of a school building in over a month. So, please just give a minute to think about that. And remember that the middle school is in two cohorts already, always has been. Thank you.
Mrs. Kumar?
Um, so, I agree that we, with what it seems to be the majority, that we should be, we should consider Phase Two in January. So, and I do think that the plan, as we looked at it two weeks ago, was a good idea, but as we're seeing the numbers within the county, I think it's a good, also a good idea to just stick with where we are and what seems to be working. As far as the cohorts in high school, I do want to see them reduced to two cohorts. However, I actually think because the way the schedule is over the next couple months, because we're talking about, okay, they're going to take time off for this, because we're not, we're going to be virtual for two weeks, because of the holidays and everything else, and also taking a look at, we did get the numbers. If we did reduce to two right now, we're going to be able to socially distance them. But if anyone gets added, so if anyone opts back in, we may not be able to socially distance those students. And this was a discussion we had in Education Committee. So, right now, with the numbers as they are in terms of COVID cases in town, I am not ready to go to two cohorts because of those numbers. And I just want to stick with where we are, even though I do agree we should have more children in the classroom. And as a former high school teacher in town, I do think it's important for them to be there. I just don't see with the next couple months how it's going to be able to work. So, I'd really like to do that in January, as far as that goes.
Mrs. Putup?
If the enrollment in person in the high school is that low, I would agree with Mrs. Shear and say we should try to blend the cohorts into two. If we're already doing that at the middle schools, I could see where that would be a good idea and stay with Plan One, but with two cohorts at the high school. Thank you.
Anyone else before I weigh in? Okay. I think we should proceed with the, after Thanksgiving and after holiday break, high-risk virtual weeks. I am okay and agree with continuing with Wednesdays the way they are, because that's, seems to be the consensus from the community as well as the Board. The cohorts, I appreciate Mrs. Shear's position, and as long as we could do that safely, I think we should, because my goal, and I think everyone's goal here, is more in-person education, if it's doable, without putting anyone at any unnecessary or additional risk. So, if we could do those cohorts and still put off the rest of the plan until mid-January and do the extra virtual weeks, I think that that's the best way to go. And at this point, unless anyone else has anything to say, we'll listen to hear what the community has to say shortly. And we're not voting on this this evening. We'll be doing that next week. We have back-to-back meetings this month because of the holiday. So, we'll finalize this all next Thursday, correct, Dr. Toback?
Yes, this is a, this is a public work session, and so, it is listed as a public work session item. If the Board wanted to move ahead, we could. If the Board would choose to just wait and follow the normal process, then we could wait till the next board meeting.
It's a public work session item, so we're moving it forward anyway. Okay. We're not approving it tonight.
Not approving it, moving it ahead for the, for vote for the next meeting.
Okay. Very well. Okay. So, unless you care to add anything, Dr. Toback, your HIV report?
Yeah, I just have to add a few quick things here. One, with regard to the diversity, equity, and inclusion goals, we continue to make progress with this important goal, and at this point, all of the committees have met. Today was the first meeting of the committee to develop a district mission statement, and we look forward to seeing that work take shape and sharing this at our January meeting. At our last Board of Ed meeting, I discussed completing a thought exchange regarding our diversity, equity, and inclusion goal. Due to the fact that we were handling a large number of COVID issues, we were unable to move ahead with the thought exchange. However, we will be moving ahead soon, keeping in mind that this is a one-year goal, and we are only two and a half months into the year. As far as the HIV report goes during this reporting period, there were three incidents reported as HIV. After thorough investigation, only one of the reported incidents is found to be an actual case of HIV. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Toback. Now, I'll go to you, Mr. Moffett, with the revisions to the agenda.
It's my pleasure to report. There are no revisions to tonight's agenda.
That's a first, I think. Okay. Moving on. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Okay, I lost my place already. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Shear?
I actually have a comment.
It's not your turn, Mrs. Shear. I'm sorry.
But it's about the public. We have 176 attendees, we have a large amount of attendees. Could we possibly consider moving it to three minutes instead of five?
Well, at this point, I only see-
There's a lot of participants.
Mrs. Shear, respectfully, there's four hands raised. I'll continue. Thank you.
So, if I could ask Mrs. Shear, is she a second on the motion?
No, this, we already have a second.
Second.
No, no, no. I already recognized Mr. Giordano and Mrs. Shear. I thought you were my second. You're not my second? Oh, I'm sorry. Then, Mrs. Albanese?
Thank you.
Did you want to weigh in, Mr. Pavlak? Okay. Very well. Start welcoming our members of the public in.
Good evening. Tori Esposito, 47 Woodlot Road in Wayne. Again, thank you to the administration. I'd just like to echo Mrs. Shear's point about the schools, you know, the longer that the kids are in there, the better. I understand pushing it back, but let's be realistic. January, when it's 15 degrees out, there's snow on the ground, are they really going to go back at that point? I think if we could try to do it now and get a little bit in, that'd be great. And to Ms. Shear's point, my kids are involved in a ton of activities with kids at different schools too. So, what's the difference? Wayne does have the option of keeping your kid all remote, or if your kid wants to go in, you can do that. So, I think that's what makes it good that you have a choice to do that. So, I think if, the more our kids can get in and have that face-to-face, my kids love school. I mean, I'm paying $2,000 extra a month on top of the 53% taxes, so my kids don't fall behind. So, I just think if we can revisit that November 30th date to really get them that extra day, and the parents that don't want them to go on that Wednesday, stay home. Anything that could be done, be appreciated, because realistically, January's probably not going to happen. And my other point, so understood with the two weeks remote after the holidays, are we going to, are we going to do this again in February with President's Day break? And then, are we going to do it again for spring break? I'd rather have them go virtual those days and end school earlier. If I can get my kids out in the spring and May, on June 1st, May 1st, I'd rather not have any breaks anymore if we're going to keep doing this every other month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Ginsburg to Amy Way. A couple of things for you guys. A, thank you for all your hard work on this plan and, and, you know, to echo your point, doing things to change by the hour here, right? So, I really appreciate the work that went into it, and certainly the pivoting tonight. I think the last guy actually brought up a good point that I didn't think of is, you know, I definitely understand Thanksgiving and Christmas break, I agree with that. But what is the long-term plan, right? With, with a lot of breaks, spring break, you know, Martha or King, you know, Presidents, it's something just to think about on, do we eliminate those and try to get out of school earlier? But my points I really wanted to bring up were, I wholeheartedly agree with almost all you guys about pushing Phase Two off until, you know, hopefully mid-January. about pushing Phase Two off until, you know, hopefully mid-January, maybe it is February. I think obviously no one really knows. I have a kid in elementary school, and I think at least for the elementary and middle school, to push that off and to keep Wednesdays virtual is a really smart idea with the numbers rising the way they are. And I just want to get a point of clarification, so make sure I understand it right. In the proposal, I guess, from a couple of weeks ago and/or tonight, the two weeks after New Year's would be virtual, which I think is a smart idea. Then the pre and post Thanksgiving, as someone mentioned it, I guess during the opening statements, post Thanksgiving is the idea would be virtual for a week. And then pre Thanksgiving, there was like two days before Thanksgiving break. Any thoughts to doing what we just did for teachers' conventions? I think that worked out really well, where you just made those two days virtual versus having people in school for like a day or two and then going virtual. So if you just let me know and answer that, that I really appreciated the pre Thanksgiving and the post Thanksgiving clarity, but thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. We'll answer questions at the end, sir. Next caller?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Katie Cluck, 34, Hillcrest Drive. Um, thank you for all your hard work. We greatly appreciate it, and I understand how hard and how quickly you've been moving into making the diversity, equity, inclusion goal met as swiftly as possible. Um, I had a couple of questions on how can, for the thought exchange, will that be posted on the website? And how can we access that? And then last meeting, you said that the public does not need to know who is on these committees for diversity when asked. But I was just wondering reasoning behind that. That is all. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you. Next caller?
Hi, Eileen D'Amico, 29 Manor Drive. Once again, I want to thank the administration, as I did on the last meeting. The plan, you know, I think is a really good one. I do actually echo many of the board's sentiments in that, you know, perhaps it makes sense to push back if the majority of Phase Two a little while, although I also tend to agree with Mr. Esposito is, you know, we don't know what January is going to bring. And it could just as easily go much further south and get much worse, January, February, March, as you know, flu season continues. So, you know, what does that look like for these kids then in terms of their ability to be in school and be educated in school in some form? That being said, though, I do want to, you know, kind of jump onto the high school and the two cohort versus three cohort bandwagon a little bit. I side 100% with Mrs. Shear on this and her sentiments. You know, I keep hearing that what we have is working. And I guess broadly speaking, not only in district, but across the state, it seems to be working, if you will, from the COVID standpoint, in that we keep hearing that the numbers that we're seeing, the upticks in numbers, aren't being caused in the schools. So that's a good thing. So it's working. But quite frankly, it's not working for everybody on a student basis. It's not working, you know, it's not working for everybody. I think in a lot of cases, kids are perhaps muddling through, they're making their way through. But I don't call that that it's working. You know, I'll speak personally, it's not necessarily working in my household. And I'm sure I'm not the only one. So I guess from the high school perspective, I would urge you that if it can be done safely with the proper social distancing in line with all the necessary protocol, that you really consider merging these cohorts. I know Mrs. Shear said her student, her child, hasn't been in school in a month. If we continue as it will be, my son will be out of in-person school for six weeks. And then, you know, there's a week in, and then he's out again till mid-January or later. Quite frankly, that's not, that doesn't work. It doesn't work for him. You know, there's just, there's too much at stake this year. There's too much at risk in a lot of different regards, you know, educationally. And I just, I really urge you to consider that. I also urge you to consider these kids' mental health. You know, again, especially at the high school level, if they're sitting in a classroom and it's a high school student and their one teacher, or, you know, just this complete remote and sort of isolation feeling, what is that doing to their mental health? You know, again, their physical health, of course, is tantamount. I don't want anyone to get sick. But the flip side is, that just really needs to be considered and looked at. And so if there's a way to merge those two safely within the confines of all the necessary restrictions and requirements, I just ask the board to really consider at least that piece of it and moving forward with the merging of the two cohorts. And if parents and students aren't comfortable being, you know, in the building in a slightly, you know, larger-sized group, then they do have the option to stay home, as Mr. Esposito pointed out. And, you know, they can certainly exercise that option, and the kids can stay home. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's a caller, Ilion Nunes. You have an older version of Zoom, and we can admit you. I recommend you try to call in or update your software. Next caller, Mr. Dr. Bichard. I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Melissa Casimacena, 95, Robin Hood Way. Just calling in about the high school cohort thing. I cannot agree with Mrs. Shear anymore. That I already do, and what Mrs. D'Amico just said. My son is in the same cohort as Mrs. D'Amico. He will also be out of school for six weeks. If Governor Murphy said he's not planning on going virtual, if he does, us being down to two cohorts has no bearing on that. These kids are either going to be in school or they're going to be all virtual because Governor Murphy shuts it down. At this point, I'm a frontliner. I'm a hospital RN. Have the numbers ticked up? Barely. We are not anywhere even close to where we were back in the spring. God willing, it doesn't get to that point. But it is not bad right now. These kids need to be in school. And if they can stay socially distanced, now is the time to do it. Waiting till January is way too long. These kids are losing way too much time. They are losing interest. They are losing the ability to learn. It's just not fair at this point. They need to be in school. Please go to two cohorts at the high school.
Thank you. Next caller?
Hi, this is Jenny Franklin, 21, Kalamazade Drive. I would like to reiterate what the other high school parents have said. The high schoolers need more time in school. There's just really no other way to put it. They need more time in school. Going to two cohorts, I believe, is the best solution for that. I would also like to ask that the administration consider in a situation where we do have to go to a remote week like we are in right now, where everyone is virtual, that there be requirements asked of the teachers that they must make use of their Google meets and things like that to reach out to the students on, just as they would as if the students were in school. And that that be continued as much as possible from their homes. I'm seeing some situations where when we're home, we don't get, when everyone is home, they don't get any contact time with the teacher on those days. And I think that's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Hi, John Marks, 391 Black Oak. Thank you for everyone's hard work with the plan. I agree on pushing Phase Two back till probably the new year, just to kind of see how everything goes. My only comment was, I was just trying to figure out the community. I know the, I wasn't sure, I didn't get a parent survey, so I wasn't sure if that was sent out via email or was it the thought exchange? I personally prefer the email, so I feel like anytime, just my suggestion or my comment would be anything where we try to get information from the community or parents as far as input. I feel the email is better communication-wise than the thought exchange. But again, I just wasn't sure where we were getting those numbers from, so if you could just let me know where we got those. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next?
Oh, hello. Is it my turn?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I've never done this before. My name's Stacy Gerstein, 21, Ruskin Court. I have two questions. For the Wellness Wednesday, is the only option that we are either in person on Wednesdays or Wellness Wednesday? Could it be a regular instruction day? And my other one is, I don't see why there's any reason why there shouldn't be in-person school on the Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That Cohort A has already missed so many days. And it's not as if people are traveling before then. I understand the week after Thanksgiving, but there's no reason Monday, Tuesday should not be a regular school day. My final question is, if we do switch to all virtual weeks, will the teachers be teaching from their classroom where they have access to all of their materials? Or will they still be teaching from home? That's all.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, my name is Brittany Farrell. I'm at 23 Woodlot Road. I just wanted to get clarification as far as the Early Childhood Center. Will that be in Phase Two with the children going five days a week? Because my four-year-old, who has an IEP, is supposed to be there five days a week. And he only goes, obviously, two. And the days that he has to go virtual, the instruction is maybe 20 minutes, and it's not even instruction. It's sing a welcome song, what day of the week is it, and they're done. He had his first virtual speech session today, and that was far more successful than any of the other instructions he has gotten at all from his teacher. I think the younger kids need to be in school more than the high school kids. I understand the high school kids', you know, mental health and all that, but they can handle going virtual. The younger kids cannot. The early childhood kids, they need to be there five days a week or four days a week if you want to keep Wednesdays. As well as the elementary school kids. I have two kids at Lafayette, and their teachers want them there every day. The parents want them there every day. If you don't want your kid there, then don't send them. I don't think it's fair that the kids are struggling mentally, because my child has not been in school for two weeks. He's mentally done. He's checked out. He's in second grade, and his depression now is back where it was in the spring. It's not fair to them, and it's not fair to the teachers who have to do double the amount of work to get them all on the same page. I appreciate everything you guys have done, but I think a lot more needs to be done. And I agree with Mr. Esposito that if we don't get them in school now, January is not going to happen. It's really not. My husband's a first responder. He's a police officer, so he's been there every single day since this has started. There is no reason for them not to be in school. They're going to be exposed from their friends. They're going to be exposed outside of school. They're not going to be exposed with masks on, three feet apart. It's not going to happen. I just, I think there needs to be more support for the kids to be there four or five days a week, especially the early childhood kids, because they are getting nothing. If they're not in school, it's a 20-minute Zoom, and they're done. They're saying hi, and that's it. My child screams and cries hysterically every day he has to do a Zoom. So you need to think about the younger kids as well, not just the high school kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Andrea McHale, 82, Hershey Road. Hi, I just wanted to thank everyone for their hard work. I know it's not an easy situation for anyone. I have children in all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school. I'm worried about all of them, you know, mental health, physical health. But I will say that I would like to offer my support for switching the high school from three cohorts to two cohorts. These high school kids, they have a lot on the line, not a lot of time to catch up. They have one, two, maybe three more years of school before college. They need every minute of in-person instruction that they can get right now. And I just wanted to reiterate the importance of that. I think we need to switch to two cohorts. I do support waiting till January for Phase Two. But overall, I just, I really think it's important for these kids to get back in person as much as possible. My son tells me that he's got maybe four kids in class with him when he is in person for his four minimal days of the month. So, you know, if that doubles to eight kids, you know, in person, I just don't see that being that much of a difference. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, this is Dan Daly, 53, Osceola Road. I'm a parent of students in the Wayne School System. I also happen to be the Wayne Township Emergency Management Coordinator. As having that role, I think it's very important that we look at the big picture of the whole community. And it's important for people to have the accurate data. So I know that everyone's been discussing that there is data tonight, but I would just like to go over some of it, just so that the community's informed. There's definitely an increase in coronavirus cases right now. There's no doubt about that, and, you know, it's on the rise. I think it's important to point out that there's a great increase in the amount of testing going on as well. We in Wayne Township have now begun providing testing. Many doctor's offices are providing testing. So, you know, I'm going to give some data off of the state Department of Health website and, you know, very current data from today. So there's already been 5.124 million tests given in New Jersey, and that is PCR tests. So I believe that doesn't even include the rapid tests. So, you know, as I said, there's a tremendous amount of testing going on, which of course, as the second wave is coming in, that's definitely going to increase your numbers. I think it's important for people to understand the level of the acuity that's happening right now. So just, I want to compare for everyone, you know, back when things were really out of control back in April and May. April 29th, there were over 6,000 people in the hospital in New Jersey related to COVID, and as of yesterday, there were 1,800. So 1,800 is still significant. We've gone up, but in comparison to the peak, we're in much better shape. There's also 117 people in the state on ventilators right now. Obviously, no one wants to be on a ventilator. That's a really serious situation, but there are 9 million people in New Jersey. So I think when you compare that, it's still quite low. I think it's important for people to take the precautions that we all know are necessary, like wash your hands, keep your distance, you know, wear your mask when you cannot. Those things are important. As far as schools, statewide, the state is saying that there's 192 cases linked to school outbreaks, which of course, you know, nobody wants any kind of outbreaks in the school. But it's important to note that there's 1.37 million students enrolled in the state of New Jersey right now. And there's 2,600 schools in the state of New Jersey, K through 12. So you know, in comparison, things are going very well in the school setting. As far as mortality, which of course is probably the most important issue, you know, back in the middle of, or I'm sorry, like early April, on April 6th, there were 493 lab-confirmed deaths. Over these last few weeks, you know, there's numbers being reported per day such as four, seven, you know, numbers in that area. So fortunately, the cases are rising, but so far the mortality is staying low, which is a really good thing, you know, for everyone. And that, of course, is what we want to see. So I just wanted to point that out so that the community's aware that while we have an increase, it's, we haven't seen it reach the level of acuity and you know, danger that we saw in the past. Obviously, could it go there? We don't know. So we do need to be careful. But based on, you know, the data that's here, you know, I don't want to even give an opinion other- you know, I don't want to even give an opinion other than to say I wanted to make sure everybody in the community was aware of it. So, thank you.
Next caller. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Gentile from 33 Marlton Drive. I also have a daughter in the high school, and I completely agree that they have to go back to two cohorts. She's in Cohort A. I mean, she's a freshman. It's a terrible way to have your freshman year, but she's in Cohort A. The last time she was in school was the last week in October. If her next time that she's supposed to go back is the week after Thanksgiving. If that week is all remote, the next time she will be in school is the middle of January. That's 10, over 10 to 12 weeks. It's absolutely ridiculous. They have to combine these cohorts. Some of her classes have two kids in them. They got, and they need to do it before January. It's got to get done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller.
Hi, Eda Ferrante, WEA President. I'd just like to point out that during this whole discussion, there was never any talk about the effect on the educators, the teachers and the support staff in our buildings. You know, they are very scared and out of their minds, in fact, in terms of this virus and what it's doing to not only the state, the county, and this country. I'd also like to point out that educators also have families and children of their own that they're concerned about. So we need to remember that. I would also like to say that there has been no answer as to what administration is going to do should more kids now want to go back into the classroom after the cohorts have been combined. So unless that's answered, you can't possibly go ahead with this plan to bring these two cohorts together. And I commend the board members tonight that are, you know, talking with a cautious tone and really being mindful that this virus, I mean, I looked at the map today, in particular the county, and Passaic County is red. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next. Hello?
Hello, my name is Jason Coburn. I just wanted to give a slightly different perspective that I think a lot of people haven't heard from. I work at the Wayne YMCA at our virtual learning program, and I deal with almost a dozen kids on a daily basis who are always in virtual learning. And I just feel that it's not at a level that it should be. And I get that a lot of teachers are trying very hard to keep these students engaged. My group is specifically second-grade students, and a lot of the days, I feel like I'm teaching them more than their teachers are, just because either it's hard for them to focus or their teachers haven't fully planned what they want to do. And I understand it's not easy for teachers to teach younger kids in this virtual format, but I feel like they need to work to find a different way that they can do it because it's very difficult for me to teach material to eight different students or 10 different students when I only have a high school diploma and I don't have any experience teaching. And I'm trying my very best, and I know a lot of parents are happy with our program and the way it's running, but I just think the teachers need to try a little bit harder to make sure that their students can understand whether that's doing more one-on-one meetings or whether that's doing more just to really try and make it so that these students can understand their information because it's not getting through at a level that I think it should for a lot of the kids. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Burchard? Okay. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, my name is Ellie Verduin, and I am a proud teacher at Wayne Hills. I love my job, and the best part of the day is seeing the students, whether in class or virtually. I want to thank you for recognizing that we are going into a high-risk period and maintaining the virtual Wednesdays so that we can have the deep cleaning. And then, of course, after the holidays, when we know some families will be getting together with extended family, is more risky. As far as combining the cohorts, I have always maintained that I work with the most dangerous population. The parking lot is the most dangerous, and of course, the parents are not keeping tabs on high school students as they would a first grader, a kindergartner. So as you can see with the Halloween party, what that caused us to have to go virtual this week. And luckily, last week, we were already virtual. So as far as combining the two cohorts, there's still a good population of students in the hallway, okay? And they really are not socially distancing. We have to keep reminding them of that. So I just am a little scared with the thought of combining. And I hear the parents. I know they want the kids in school. Believe me, I want the kids in school. It's the best, it's so great seeing them. But to recognize that things have been working so far as far as safety and our health, so please consider that before you combine the cohorts. And as far as the Google meets, we at the high school are on the Google meets for the entire 40 minutes. We also encourage our students to join us at 1:30 during our office hours. I've had many students that are advocating for themselves, which is really a great thing. And I see them. I'll even do it with one student. So anyway, I just want to say I love, I love teaching. I love the kids, but please consider before you join back to two cohorts. Thank you so much, and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Can I get a mover to close public session? Mr. Pavlak, second. Mr. Giordano. Ilion Nunez, I'm sorry. Try calling in. If you refer to our website, there's a phone number, and you can come into the public session, which will be in just a few short minutes. Your Zoom is not working. Okay. Moving on. Committee reports. Mr. Bubba.
So, technology met tonight with myself and Mr. Burchard. We discussed a few different items on the agenda that aren't on the agenda, but we discussed a few different items that are of importance. All the devices, the new laptops are out, and we are now working on the paras who are going to get the Chromebooks that the teachers didn't use, and they should be out tomorrow. We have done more Swivel training, and that will continue for the rest of the time as more come in. We have given new tools with Google Enterprise. We've given new tools for teachers for Google Meet, which is always good. And we are looking for two more schools by the end of the year to add for phone system to help with security, which that was good news. And the last thing I noticed we talked about was we need to add another physician of a teacher trainer. We have one right now that handles every application for the whole district, and frankly, it's overwhelming with everything that she has to do. So we think it's time, and the committee thinks it's time, that we added one to help with some of that, alleviate some of the issues with teachers having a place to go with, to the trainer who's actually going to train them on the applications. And that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Mrs. Albanese.
Thank you. The Finance Committee met tonight here at Anthony Wayne Middle School. In attendance for the Board of Education were Mr. Matt Giordano, Catherine Kazan, and Eileen Albanese. Administrators present were Bill Moffett, our Business Administrator, as well as Cheryl Leiting, the Assistant Business Administrator. We reviewed the agenda items that were on tonight's agenda. We went over the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan, which is an item required for budgeting. We approved the cancellation of checks. We reviewed capital projects, closeouts, which were basically projects started several years ago that have been completed. So those line items have been finished and closed. The MRSCO contract is up for review. We've reviewed a budget transfer that had to do with the Facility Committee. We looked at some budgeting items. We are looking at the end of the audit being finished up and a report to come to the board shortly. We had a discussion about unemployment update, which will again come to the board. We're still seeing additional claims, and there have been several items disputed by the, by the Business Office. The board will again receive this year virtual binders that will start shortly where Mr. Moffett will start uploading information for the board to review. We're again looking at our food service contracts, health insurance for Chapter 44, which will be reviewed at a later date by the administration. These are options for employees, and they're fielding a lot of employee questions and information for employees to consider. And that was our meeting for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Is there anyone else who has a report this evening? Mrs. Puttup?
I have two reports. Thank you. The Policy Committee met this afternoon at 1 o'clock. Our liaison is Paula Clark, Head of Human Resources, and in attendance were Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Kumar, and myself. We went over and reviewed 11 policies that have come up, have been forwarded to the district through Strauss ESME. And policies are basically formed from laws that New Jersey State, especially the Department of Education, passes or reviews. And then it comes to the local school district, in this case being Wayne, and they are regulations that we have to inculcate into our own school district to make sure that we comply with the laws put forth by the state. So this afternoon, we went through 11 different updates, and they're on the agenda if people would like to look and see what we've been looking at. So, thank you. That's the first meeting. The next meeting was the Education Committee that met at 5 o'clock this afternoon. Our liaison is Donna Reichman, Assistant Superintendent, and Mrs. Shear, Mrs. Kumar, and myself were in attendance. We reviewed the October 8th Education Committee minutes. We also went through the agenda items before us this afternoon. We will be having approval of two dual agreements with, one with Rockland Community College and one with NJIT. There will be an expansion of Unified Sports in the district, which supports our special education students, and that will also include the Early Childhood Center. We have a new club starting at high schools. It's called DECA, D-E-C-A, and it stands for Distributive Education Club of America. It has to do with advertising and marketing, and that will be paid for by a grant, which is terrific. We also got a preview of the 21-22 school calendar. There are five different versions that we looked at, and those will be coming forward through committee and to the full board in the ensuing weeks. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Puttup. I think that's it for tonight for committee reports. Okay. Can I get a mover for the agenda? For the public work session items or the whole agenda? Anybody?
Madam President?
Mr. Bubba?
I move that we move the whole agenda. I consent.
Okay. Can I get a second?
I second.
Oh, I got you, Mr. Pavlak first. Okay. Any discussion on the agenda items emergent or public works? Roll call, Mr. Moffett.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba? Mr. Duffy? I don't see him. He is absent. Mr. Giordano? Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mrs. Puttup?
Yes.
Mrs. Shear?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, on to our final public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Okay. First caller. Oh, can I get a mover? Sorry. Mrs. Albanese, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you.
You're on. Hello? There you are.
Okay, I'm sorry. My computer was having technical difficulties.
Okay, we're having the same. Go right ahead.
Abigail Giordano, 20, Stylon Road. Um, thank you to the people of Wayne for your support in the 2020 election. It warms my heart to see that many voters of Wayne supported me through this election. To my friends and family, thank you for supporting me through the election and giving me the encouragement to run for the Wayne BOE. To the winning candidates, congratulations on winning this election. I wish you the utmost luck in continuing to serve Wayne to the best of your abilities. Thank you to the entire Board of Education and the administration for your hard work during the pandemic. It is truly appreciated. Most importantly, I would like to thank my parents, my brother Anthony, and my neighbor Nancy for supporting and encouraging me throughout this election. I could have not have done this without the support of the Wayne community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Katie Cottler, 34 Hopeless Drive again. I just want to, once again, thank you, especially for how timely you are moving in a fashion for your goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would, once again, just like to stress the, thank you again for the movements made, and thank all of the teachers in the history curriculum. But I would, once again, like to stress the importance of diversity in English curricula and in learning about diversity and equity and civil rights in younger grades, in like picture books and stuff, as well as in the English curriculum as for high schools, learning about different important authors because authors like James Baldwin and Maya Angelou are both not only important because of their importance in history, but also because they are some of the greatest American writers, and leaving them out of the story just doesn't do literature justice. Again, I would really like to thank you for how much care you've been putting into this issue. And I'd also, once again, like to stress, or not stress, ask why the public shouldn't know the members of the committees, but thank you again. Bye.
Thank you. Next. Next.
Hi, this is Alan Tempestu, 41 Gibbs Drive. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I have two things. First, I want to mention that this week, in honor of Veterans Day, the Skylar Kofax School where my son attends put together a video. And I thought, they sent it to all the parents. I thought it was a wonderful way of recognizing all of the different veterans who are relatives of the various teachers and students of the school. And I thought it was spectacular. So I want to commend them for such a fantastic job in doing that. Secondly, I just wanted to follow up from my question from two weeks ago. I don't know if it was answered earlier because I came in a little late as to whether the two-week notice provision for virtual to in-person or vice versa is staying as is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a mover to close public session? Mr. Giordano, Mr. Pavlak. I'm sorry, Ilionne Nunes, but your Zoom is still not working. If you have a question, feel free to email any of us with that question. Okay, old business. New business. I'll get to you, Dr. Toback. I'm sorry, Ms. Kumar.
Sorry, my mute button isn't working well today for some reason. I just wanted to thank all the veterans for their service. And also, this weekend's a pretty big celebration for a lot of our students and families. This weekend, DiVale is being celebrated, so I did want to wish everybody happy DiVale this weekend. That's all. Nice things for most part.
Thank you. Okay, we'll get to final board comments after Dr. Toback addresses some of the public comment.
Okay. Mrs. Kazan, I have a lot of notes here. But I did notice that quite a few of the members of the public commented about the need to merge cohorts. So that certainly that those concerns are acknowledged and heard loud and clear. As far as David Ginsberg, he asked if there was a long-term pandemic plan. The district does not have a long-term plan. Our plan is broken into phases, knowing that the pandemic is something that really changes very rapidly. So we felt that having a phased plan would be more helpful for the district as opposed to having a long-term plan, because like I said, there's so much uncertainty. The other question had to do with the holidays. And can we eliminate holidays in order to end the school year quickly and maybe go virtual or some other, you know, maybe look at some other options. The holidays that the district grants are, for most part, tied to contracts. And so the employment contracts for the different bargaining units of the district specify which holidays have to be offered to the employees. So that is in large part why there's really not much to do in terms of moving holidays or eliminating holidays. Katie Cluck asked about the thought exchange, and so I explained it a little bit before. But her question was, how would it be posted? And so the answer is it would be on a website. And so it'll be on our district website. It'll be sent out by social media. It'll also be sent out by email to those who we have emails for, but any, any member of the public would be able to participate. She also asked again about the identity of the committee members. I can't comment on that. I'm not sure about the origins of that. I know that there was a discussion about that, but I don't remember any of the details, to be quite honest. So as far as Jamie Franklin, I know your comments were heard loud and clear. And I will be giving you a phone call tomorrow. I'd like to talk a little bit more to you about the specifics of your concerns. Let me see here. One of, I didn't catch the last name. John is the first name, wrote about the opportunity to comment on the Phase 2 Plan. So the Phase 2 Plan opportunity to comment was posted with it on our website. And there was an email to, that you were able to send comments and however you felt fit or whoever would like to send in comments about the Phase 2 Plan. So we had about 260? Okay, 270? Okay. The next few comments were comments about merging cohorts at the high school level. So, Eda Ferrante, the Association President for the Teachers, asked a comment, or made a comment, or asked a question about the administration, and that there has to be a plan, what if more students return? And so basically, that's been something that was part of our original plan. And it's something that was discussed at our last meeting. It's related to Mr. Tempestu's comment. At the last meeting, we talked about having the requirement to remain within either a hybrid environment or if you were virtual for the marking period. Since that time, we've reviewed the concerns. And so what we'd like to do is keep the two-week notice provision. But we also know, like you said, there could be a significant impact on staffing. Although we don't see that happening, to be quite honest. But the idea is that you have the two-week notice provision, but then everyone who is going to come back into the school from remote would come in at the first school day of the month. Okay, so there'd be a little more time. That's kind of the compromised position that I think really works out well for everybody. So you do have the two-week notice provision. Principals have the opportunity. But again, going back to what was said right from the very beginning of our first phase, there's no guarantees. And so the schedule that you might want as a student may not necessarily be the schedule that you get due to class sizes and the need to make sure we maintain social distancing. Okay. Let me see what else we have here. I think that that covers all the questions that were. Did I miss something?
Talk to Katie about internal committees and the difference between a one-year goal and a regular board.
I didn't, because I don't really remember the nature of the comment.
She mentioned it at the last meeting, and a board member commented that we don't, we don't, we don't tell who's on internal committees. It's not our policy.
Certainly not.
Okay.
You're still there.
Okay. Back, okay. Uh, all right, so you're finished, Dr. Toback?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Board comments. Mr. Giordano.
Thank you. I wanted to first congratulate the people who are being re-elected to the Board of Education. Congratulations, Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Duffy, and Ms. Kazan. I thank you for a very well-run campaign. My daughter missed by about 300 votes. We're all very, very proud of her. And one thing I do want to say is, as a parent, the greatest gift you can give a child is opportunity. I think we all try to present opportunities throughout a child's life. And as they grow and they blossom, you present more opportunities to them. And you see how they spread their wings and soar. And in a very short period of time, my little girl grew up into an adult. And I just want to tell her I love her very much, and I'm very, very proud of what she did. Whether win or lose, I think she's fantastic. And look out, world, here she comes. And very well done for all of you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any closing comments? Mrs. Putup.
Ms. Ferrante called in and mentioned that we hadn't mentioned teachers, or we weren't talking about teachers. Well, you can't talk about teachers without talking about students and their families, and our bus drivers, and the aides, and the paraprofessionals, and the custodians. Because everything is interwoven into this fabric. And it's, it's a community effort. It, that's why we're sticking with Phase 1. It's because we care about everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putup. Anyone else? Mrs. Shear?
Yeah, I have a few things. I, I want to congratulate all the board members that were re-elected to the board. It's wonderful, and thank you for your commitment. I wanted to thank Mr. Daley for calling in and giving the numbers that he, that he gave, and someone in his position, he gets all the numbers. And it's just nice to hear the reality of it, the actual perspective, especially since the governor literally just tweeted before that it's all a rumor about him closing schools. I wanted to say to Ms. Ferrante that this board has always cared about the teachers and shown their affection for the teachers. I don't think that it has anything to do with not caring about how the teachers feel. But it's, it's not, you know, the teachers are very concerned. I get that. But the teachers are also out in the world, too. They're in the grocery stores and Target, where they're bumping into a lot more people than the six students that may be sitting in front of them if we combine high school cohorts. So I just don't think that people showing concern for their children wanting to be in school more has anything to do with them not caring about the teachers. I am a teacher, and I deeply care about my profession and anybody who is in my profession. And I just wanted to go for Katie Cluck's sake. I know it was kind of just brushed over here with Ms. Kazan and Dr. Toback. And I just want to make it clear that Dr. Toback said that is not our policy. We do not give names out of our internal committees. You would be giving names out of teachers on committees that, in all honesty, don't need to hear from the public. That's not, that's not, that's not their role as far, if you want to contact administration, please, by all means, you have their email, contact them, and come and speak at the board meetings. But to give out teachers' names that are on actual committees, I, I wouldn't think that that would be fair to do to any of our teachers. So I just wanted to reiterate, because I feel like it was kind of brushed over, and they have asked at quite a few meetings already, which is why I brought it up last time, because they kept asking, people keep asking who's on the committees. So that's why I actually brought it up last time, saying that we don't give out those names. So that they're getting an answer to their question. Thank you.
Mr. Pavlak.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Kazan and Mr. Duffy on their victory in the election. And I'd like to thank the citizens of Wayne for having the faith to reelect me for another term here. I know nothing's official yet, and we don't know when it's going to be official. Hopefully, next week or the end of this week, tomorrow, we're not sure. But thank you, everyone. I hear the high school parents loud and clear. And I think this, combining the cohort, we need a little more discussion with the administration on this. And even I'd like input from Dr. Goldberg as well. Mr. Daley brought up some really good points, numbers. So I think moving forward, I'll send an email to the president and to the administration with my questions. And hopefully, we can resolve this by next week. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Anyone else?
Oh.
Mrs. Putup?
I was going to move to close. Thank you.
Can I, can I speak first?
You didn't just, you shouldn't have jumped right in there.
I usually go last. Okay, so no one else? Then I'm going to go last, then we'll, we'll take your motion, Mrs. Putup. Okay, I have a few things. First of all, I want to thank all the stakeholders who've weighed in on Phase 2. I've received multiple emails. I didn't answer them because I felt we would be answering all of you here tonight. So I hope you were able to tune in. We are moving cautiously, and I think that's the best course of action. I want to commend Ms. Giordano on her run for the board. I want to thank you for attempting to step up and serve your community. I'm sure we haven't seen the last of you. Good for you. And thank you for your congratulatory wishes. I also want to congratulate and thank my colleagues for their reelection. I'm happy to have everybody back together. We have important work that we're still doing. And I'm looking forward to continuing our work together. I want to thank the public, of course, for the overwhelming support. This was quite the voter turnout, which I like to see in any election. I think it was fantastic. And I hope it's a pattern that continues. Democracy is important, and that's what it's all about, showing up and casting your vote. Ms. Cluck? On another topic, I hear you have many, many suggestions. I recommend you put them on paper, and you send them in so that we can share your thoughts with the committee as far as your authors and your books and the things that are important to you. And they'll be considered. But calling in isn't necessarily the best way to get that across to our committees. I'm not suggesting you stop calling in. I'm just trying to help you get your voice heard at the proper place. Okay. We'll be back next week. And at that point, I'm sure we'll have a final answer for you on all of this. And thank you for your input, and have a good night. And I'll take a move to close. Mrs. Putup. Mr. Giordano. Thank you all. Have a good night.